We will invite the scouts to come forward and we'll begin in just a few minutes. Councilmember Ray is going to organize the scouts. Welcome to our September 5, 2013 Gilbert Town Council meeting. I'm Mayor John Lewis and to my right and left are members of the Gilbert Town Council and we appreciate your attendance tonight. I call the meeting to order and as listed on the agenda, we will begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as councilmembers. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk and interested person should contact the clerk for further information. The invocation tonight will be offered by Pastor Delmar Gisi of Life Community Church, after which, under the direction of Councilmember Ray, one of our scouts will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We invite those here at council chambers to please arise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this wonderful town that we live in. We thank you for the freedom that we have to assemble like this and to offer prayer. So Lord, we do ask for guidance, we ask for wisdom in all the things that are being discussed this evening. Lord, we pray you would bless. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Mayor, Gannon is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have each one of the scouts introduce themselves, like we practiced, your name, your troop, and your rank.
I am Gannon Martino and I'm from Troop 482 and I am a tenderfoot.
My name is Kendall Moore and I am Troop 482 and I am a tenderfoot.
My name is Brayden Stanley. I'm from Troop 482 and I'm a scout.
My name is Harrison Johnson and I'm from Troop 842 and my rank is scout.
My name is Landon Woods. I'm a scout and I'm in Troop 482.
Good evening. My name is Leanne Woods. I am the 11-year-old scout leader for Troop 482.
And I'm Chelsea Armstrong, 11-year-old scout leader for Troop 482.
Troop 482, we appreciate each one of you coming tonight. Mayor, do you have any departing words for them?
I'm impressed. Thank you for being here. I'll leave it at that. Thanks. Our town clerk, Kathy Templeton, will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Ray?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
For Miss President.
On the agenda, we have three presentations and proclamations. Councilmember Taylor will read the pillar of the month, Responsibility.
Mayor, this month's highlighted pillar is responsibility. As councilmembers and town staff, we are dedicated to being reliable and fulfilling all obligations. We accept responsibility for our decisions, not making excuses. We are committed to being accountable for the services we provide.
Could I have Brian through the front? And could I also have our, could I have Officer Barnhart and his lovely wife Amber here next to me? And also, could I have all of our team members that were involved in a wonderful event that happened in Gilbert to one of our team members? So if I can have all the emergency services folks here with us. Let me just share a little note here and then I'm going to turn the mic over to Battalion Chief Brian here. On July 11th of this year, Officer Barnhart and his wife Amber witnessed a off-duty town employee go into a cardiac arrest at a gym. With their quickness and their expertise and their wonderfulness of skills, they were able to keep that town employee person alive. And I would like to share a little bit, right, I give the mic to Brian and you can share a little more about the technical pieces of that.
Great. Thank you, sir. One of the things that we want to celebrate truly is the acts that Officer Barnhart and his wife Amber exhibited in doing bystander CPR. And Shawn Waterman is dear to the fire department's heart. He used to be a firefighter with us. And he experienced some heart troubles one day at work and found out that he has a condition that brought him down a long road that made him have the decision to go to work for another department in the town and to leave behind the career of a firefighter. He was working out in the gym one day and Officer Barnhart and his wife Amber noticed him having difficulties and actually fell to the ground and they performed bystander CPR. And they saved his life. And they saved his life in that moment because they were able to continue the blood flowing through his body until the crew off Engine 258 got there. And then they saved his life. And it's something that our firefighters and our paramedics and our EMTs do every day, but we think of it as a job and it's not something that we look at it as we're saving a life. We think of it as we have skills and abilities to do something to make a difference in this person's condition right now, but really what it is, it's saving a life. Captain Ken Russell on the end there and his engineer Frank Lopez, firefighter Jake Sample and firefighter Don Perry, they worked together as a team and a crew and relieved the bystander CPR that they were doing excellently. And they added the monitor to them. They gave them all the life-saving drugs. They assessed him and then they quickly transported him with the help of EMT Chad Cleland off of PMT Rescue 281. That is a combination rescue with the City of Chandler. Because we work in an automatic aid system, this call was actually in the City of Chandler, if I'm correct. Is that right? Yeah. And our fire engine was the closest one to it, so we got dispatched to it. But the Chandler Battalion Chief, they couldn't be here tonight. Lance Trela and his captain, Tim McGoy, responded as well and assisted. And it was through the combination of all of their efforts and all of their actions that they were able to revive Shawn and get him to the hospital where not only was his heart beating and he was breathing, but he was actually speaking again. And he actually had some sense of idea of what was happening to him. It is my pleasure to report that he's doing well. He has a new little device in his chest that's going to keep track of this for him. But it was truly from the actions all the way across the room that made a difference in his life and always will have made a difference in his life, so thank you. We have some certificates and I'm going to give this back to you.
Thank you. Let me just read the names of those individuals that were a participant of that day. Both Amber and Frank Barnhart, Chad Cleland, Frank Lopez, Tim McGoy, Don Perry, Ken Russell, Jake Sample, Jim Sprangler, and Lance Trela. So can we just have a wonderful round of applause? And I would like to-
Gabe, the photographer.
I know, I'm so confused right now.
I think half of Dana's team's on vacation this current day.
Dana's team?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Didn't know you had it in them.
Oh, I thought.
Yeah.
Mayor, we probably could have had them stay up here for this next one, but instead of the whole team, we'll ask Chief Joe Bush to come forward. We have a proclamation about 9/11 and, Chief, come over here if you will. We all know that 9/11 was truly a day that we'll never forget and we did learn that there's true evil in the world, but we also learned that there is courage and strength and goodness as well. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that in our proclamation and we want to recognize those public safety personnel who showed their courage and so we're grateful for Chief Joe Bush here to accept this. Whereas on September 11, 2001, the American people endured with courage and heroism the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history. And whereas in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity and carried out countless acts of kindness and generosity and compassion. And whereas community organizations and family members of 9/11 victims began observing the anniversary of September 11 as a charitable service day to honor the memory of those who were lost and those who united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. Whereas September 11 National Day of Service and remembrance activities are being organized by a wide range of nonprofits, faith-based, and community groups, public agencies, educational institutions, private businesses, and other organizations across the nation. Whereas September 11, 2013, on the days leading up to and following this day, citizens of the town of Gilbert have an opportunity to participate in activities that honor 9/11 victims and heroes by joining together in service projects to meet community needs. Now therefore, John W. Lewis, mayor of the town of Gilbert, does hereby proclaim September 11 a day of service and remembrance in the town of Gilbert and call upon the people of the town of Gilbert to honor the lives and memories of those lost through participation in community service and remembrance ceremonies on this day and throughout the year. Let's give our first responders a hand for that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. One thing I'll add to what you've heard so far is just a reminder that the September 11 anniversary is coming up next week. We have a beautiful memorial out here outside the building and we will be commemorating that event on September 11 at 8:30 in the morning. We'll have a short ceremony and we invite the public, come out and join us. And Mayor, I hope I didn't steal your thunder on that. You're probably going to talk about that anyway. Anyway, for anybody who'd like to attend, we'd love to have you. And I'll end with a big thank you for that because that really was a community project that a lot of people got behind a couple of years ago, so thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Joe Bush. I spoke with a couple of our great citizens who are attending tonight in council chambers and you mentioned this is your first time to come to a council meeting and so we welcome you. So you will know, and I tend to do this, at the end of the meeting are agenda items that allow current events to come forward and sometimes I pull them up to the front and that's what I'm about to do. So just momentarily and then we'll get back to the systematic approach of agenda item at a time. 35 and 37 talk about current events and Chief Joe Bush just mentioned next Wednesday morning, a 9/11 ceremony will take place here. And for citizens, Thursday nights is when council meetings are held with an exception. And the exception will be our next council meeting. It will be held on Tuesday night, September 17 and one reason for that is Gilbert is known as having the largest Constitution Week celebration in the country. And at 6:00 PM that night will be a special program in council chambers. Councilmember Taylor, tell us more about that.
Thank you, Mayor. 6 o'clock will be a special program titled "We the People" and we're going to have some community choir from Learning Foundation Performing Arts. We're going to hear from Pastor Julius Keller, give us a few words on civil rights and the Constitution. Best Buddies is going to sing "Amazing Grace" and it'll be about a 45-minute program and we're going to emphasize the importance of civil rights because this is the 150th anniversary of the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation and some other great things that President Lincoln did. And so it's a great time to kick off Constitution Week on September 17, Constitution Day. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. There will be some other activities that week. We'll mention them on that night and look forward to again having the largest Constitution Week celebration in the country. From our fire department, this month is our National Emergency Preparedness Month. We do have on our town website some information about that and one of the items that is being emphasized is to make sure that families review again their emergency plan. In case something goes awry, what would the family do? And so we encourage our citizens to pay attention to our National Emergency Preparedness Month. Also, we have a fundraiser that will take place a week from Saturday at the Hen House Cafe at Hickley in Guadalupe. The fundraising efforts will be to support our firefighters and their families from the RNL Fire and you'll learn more about that on our town website and also in the paper. Councilmember Ray, in the community is another great event taking place related to art. Tell us more about that.
So one of my assignments is to work with the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Board. I'm fortunate to work with them and they have a project going on right now called Open Seating. Some of you may have seen a big couch on the, just north of us here on Gilbert Road, on the west side of the road. That couch, along with other couches, are looking for sponsors. The Public Art Project Open Seating, it's designed to reflect the spirit of Gilbert and fun and functional creative expression with benches fashioned as comfortable living room couch with peoples or businesses who have sponsored those couches. So for people who are interested in sponsoring one of the couches, whether you sponsor it entirely by yourself or your company, or you split with other companies, you are welcome to contact any member of the council and they will get the information to myself and we'll get that to the correct people. But it will be a fun project to see the couches throughout the Heritage District, the downtown area, and something to help make the community a little bit more vibrant and show some of the artistic ability of local artists. So if anyone is interested in that, we'd love to have sponsorships, contact members of the council and they'll direct you to the right person.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. We move back to agenda item number four, Communication from Citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Vice Mayor Cooper, what request do we have tonight?
Mayor, we have one request from Amy Peterson.
Amy, as you are coming, as you know from prior experience, if you can state your name and whether you are a Gilbert resident for the record, and then you will be given three minutes to speak. Please.
My name, hi, my name is Amy Peterson and I'm a resident of Gilbert. The item I'm actually speaking on tonight apparently has been moved off the agenda, but hopefully this will increase some dialogue until it is brought before the council at a future date. I'm here to talk to the recommendation by the Economic Development Staff to lift the ban that keeps bars and liquor stores at least 300 feet away from schools and churches. I don't want to be misunderstood in that. This has nothing to do with pro-alcohol, anti-alcohol. It is solely based on the location, especially in relation to schools. I'm here solely to try to uphold the safety integrity of our schools. We have laws and ordinances that do just that. So I have to ask why on earth we're here having this discussion again? We were just here, as you know, fighting the location of Springstone Behavioral Hospital and what a mess that was. And at face value, that was ludicrous. And you know, we had this whole discussion, all this dialogue on that, so I can't believe that it would be presented to us again, that we could possibly remove an ordinance that protects our schools and keeps them from negative neighbors coming into their safety I'm willing to bet that we could find a lot more criminal activity and negative issues that surround bars and liquor stores than even surrounded behavioral hospitals, which I'm certainly willing to research for you if you need me to again. Yes, I am still disappointed and upset about that entire issue with the hospital and I did lose a little bit of trust in the staff and this certainly doesn't help to restore that faith. I don't know why we have these discussions. These are our children. They need us to protect them. Why is it okay for it to even be a discussion to remove an ordinance that is in place to protect our schools? In my opinion, it's not acceptable. I've heard the argument that schools and churches go to sleep at night and that's simply not true. As you all know, schools have all sorts of after-school activities, curriculum nights, carnivals, events. Churches have youth nights, evening events, weekend events. Again, I want to be clear that this isn't about alcohol. This isn't about me saying I don't want a bar in Gilbert. It's the location of it. And also, I guess it should be clear that these are not restaurants like Applebee's or Oregano's. These are bars that receive 40% of their revenue from the sale of liquor. It's not restaurants that serve alcohol. I guess it all boils down to keeping balance and there has to be balance in our town. And our schools need to be protected and locating these types of facilities next to our schools is not keeping a balance. So my challenge to the Economic Development Staff is to find suitable locations for these neighbors and maybe still to increase this entertainment district downtown. I would love to see it prosper, but not at the risk of lifting a law that is already in place. So I have 13 seconds. Mayor Lewis and town council members, I'm asking these things of you. One, to uphold our law on ordinances that are in place to protect our schools and churches. Do not allow this 300-foot ordinance to be lifted. If anything, we could stand to see 500 feet around our schools. And second, in regard to the general commercial zoning issue we had before, I would love to see the staff urged to continue to amend that zoning so that we don't run into an issue again with our school. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. As noted, all items are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Before I ask Vice Mayor Cooper about some requests from citizens to speak on consent calendar items, Vice Mayor Cooper, what items have been requested to be polled and which ones would we potentially move forward on?
Would you like me to make that in a motion or just, are you looking for information?
Looking for information to begin with.
Items nine through 13 will be pulled for discussion.
Okay.
Will not be part of my motion. And we have citizens that would like to speak on 10 and nine if needed, so that lines up with that.
And then 14 through, does that imply that 14 through?
No, there's, right, there's no one.
14 through 23A would be polled or would not be polled, they would?
Be part of my motion.
And we do have, I'll come back to council then, the requests from citizens do fall on the nine through 13 and so I will entertain a motion then on 14 through 23A.
Mayor, I was going to make a motion that also included five through eight.
Yes, that would be great.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar items five through 23A, pulling items nine through 13, and also noting the minor changes to item number 23 in the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That's approved with a 70 vote. Thank you. To the, well, let me do one other thing right now. Two of the items that we just voted on, 19A and 23A involve one of our great partners. Hawken, if you could please come forward and Carol and Hawken, I'll let you just do a quick description of this wonderful partnership we have with Fort MacDowell and then you can introduce Carol.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Hawken Johansson, Water Resources Manager for the town of Gilbert. The Fort MacDowell Yavapai Nation have been a great partner with the town for several years now. We've been working with them since 2010. They've leased us some of their water rights, which has been excellent in helping us to solidify our water right portfolio. And we continue to be excited about this relationship that we're building and even expanding into other areas beyond the leasing of water. And really, it's with my pleasure that I can introduce Dr. Carol Klopatic, who has been with the Fort MacDowell Yavapai Nation for 10 years now. She's served as Chief of Staff, Director of Government Relations, Chief Scientist, and has been instrumental in helping build this relationship with the town, so. Carol?
Mayor Lewis, Honorable Members of Council, it's wonderful to be before you today and I needed to share a little story with you. Before President Batia passed, one of the things that we sat on and we worked on was this agreement. And he told me before he did, he said, "You need to get this done. You need to work with our partners. I respect them. I want to continue and have you work with them." And so he, this is really in honor of him and he wants to move this forward. He wanted us and our relationship to move forward and look for other ways in which we can go ahead and share economic development. Tourism was one of the things that he really greatly believed in and he definitely wanted to go ahead and look in areas in tourism and in water banking and different things that we can do together. And this really does come from him and the bottom of his heart. So I wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Carol, we thank you and as noted on the agenda, what we just voted on is a resolution to declare that that partnership is very important to Gilbert. And thank you for your leadership and please express to our Fort MacDowell Yavapai Nation our thanks for all that they do to work with Gilbert.
And the new president, President Valderez, has an open invitation for you, Mayor Lewis, to sit down one-on-one and to come out to Fort MacDowell and also invited everybody to come to Orm Dam Days and invited you to come and be in our parade.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Returning to agenda items nine through 13, to the council, we do have, well, I think we'll poll nine and we have one citizen who requested Vice Mayor Cooper to speak if needed. And then on 10, we have two who have requested to speak and one unclear and we can find that out. So often on consent calendar items, it's an option and we haven't always had opportunities for citizens to speak and so let me just confirm if we move forward in having the citizen speak, if that's okay? Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, please, we'll begin with nine.
Item nine, Councilmember Peterson requested that we discuss that item separately.
Gabe, I was hoping you could just give us a kind of a sense of what kind of improvement you feel like this is making to our arrangement. In particular, maybe talk about the savings of cost with the way we're structuring this versus how we used to run it.
Yeah, that's not a problem. For the record, Gabe England, Assistant to the Town Manager. Councilmember Peterson, we're going through a process where we're formalizing agreements with a lot of our partners. Gilbert Sister Cities International was one of the first that we went through. The idea here is that we'll remove the formalized support that we give to the organization and keep all other elements in place where they'll still manage the relationship with Gilbert Sister Cities International for us and we'll begin paying their membership dues to Gilbert Sister Cities International. The cost savings, how it broke down, is to date this year, town staff has spent about 75 hours working with Gilbert Sister Cities International on various projects and the direct costs on that were about $3,500, about 200 in postage and mailing and the rest was direct staff time. So the savings moving forward would be 800 less from that or about 2,700. In a typical year, we estimate we spend about 50 hours working with Gilbert Sister Cities in managing that relationship and the total annual cost is about 2,500.
Thank you, Gabe. I'm really grateful that staff is taking a good, hard look at all these relationships to make sure that they're structured appropriately. One of the things I'm interested in, I asked you, I'm not going to ask you on the spot because I know it's a hard question to answer, but I'm going to be looking for an answer going forward. And any of these expenditures, I would like to look at what the return on investment is for those and that may be hard to ask now, but I'm still learning about this, so I've got some concerns, but I think that there's been some improvements here and so I think I'm- I'm ready to support it at this level.
Okay, thank you. Does that turn into a motion that you just said?
Sure, Mayor. If there's no other comments, I move to approve item nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That's approved with a 7-0 vote. And to individuals here representing Sister Cities, thank you. We have two great sister cities, Newton Abbey, Ireland, La Chine, and we appreciate all that our sister city team members do locally to strengthen those relationships. Agenda item number 10, Andy, I'll ask you to come forward. The council has received a lot of great feedback from individuals that are interested in this topic of the train quiet zone, and if you could clarify, and I say this because a couple of citizens who cannot be here tonight had requested that we include their comments. Their comments were very specific to whether they were for or against a train quiet zone. Tonight, though, what we're voting on is not whether to have train quiet zones, but something very specific, and so I will not read their comments, and when the time would come in the future to have that specific discussion about whether or not to have them, we will. But for tonight, for the citizens here, if you can state what it is the council's asked to look at, a little bit of the background, and then we'll proceed with the requests from citizens.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Lewis and Council. I'm Andy Welsh, Assistant to the Town Manager. I have a very brief presentation that I'm going to pull up. So this item was continued from the June 27 agenda. The council had asked staff to go out and do a little bit of outreach with the community to notify them that this item was up for discussion. So as a little bit of background, in 2007, the town received a complementary study about quiet zones as a result of a firm doing some work in Phoenix, and at the time, the council took no action. Again, it was discussed in 2009. The council did not take any action. And then in 2013, we were back discussing this item again. And Councilwoman Peterson had a specific question about the funding availability of doing the improvements through a special improvement district. So that's what has sparked this particular discussion. And so as some outreach that we've done, we placed a notice in the August utility bill. We posted a notice on our website, and then we've done some outreach to residents that have specifically contacted staff inquiring about this regarding tonight's agenda item. So the existing conditions that we have now in the town is that we have 13 crossings on the main line and three railroad crossings on the spur and three pedestrian crossings. And so anytime a train is within a quarter mile of an intersection, they're required to blow their horn. And there are currently nine quiet zones in Arizona, and I think a question came up with how do we compare with Chandler and why is this maybe more of a complicated than just posting signs? And that main reason is because we are on the main line as opposed to a spur, and we have more trains coming through Gilbert, approximately six to 15 trains a day coming through, and we also have pedestrian crossings. So those are a higher-risk crossing than, say, a vehicular crossing. So it's a little bit more complex, and if we were to compare ourselves to the community, we would probably be more in line with Tempe's quiet zones, just in terms of the scope and the size of the line that's coming through our community. So we have the copy of this map up close. If Mark could hand that out to the council. This is a map that we presented at the last council meeting that represents a mile within the railroad on the main line and the spur. The red is the residential properties. The blue is commercial, and then the turquoise and orange is condos and apartments, just to kind of give you a scope of what would be impacted, just as a preliminary sense of what we're looking at. And there's about 33,000 housing units within this area, including the spur. So what we're looking at tonight is a $5,800 assessment with a firm that would look at our historical documents, that 2007 report. They would research some alternatives. No one in Arizona has formed a special improvement district to fund these improvements how other states have. They would conduct a preliminary legal review. Since this has never been done in Arizona, they would talk to our bond council and try to determine if this is something that we could proceed with, and then come back to the town with a recommendation in terms of who would actually benefit. Is this a general community benefit? What is that benefit to the property owners near the lines? Come back with a preliminary methodology of how they would assess that. Would we break it down as a proportionate impact? If you're closer to the line, you have a higher percentage that you would pay. And then come back with a recommendation as to what other studies we might need to do. Is that coming back with a new assessment and studies for the intersection improvements, as well as maybe some noise? And so that's what we would receive back from this preliminary assessment. So if the council wants to move forward tonight, what I'm proposing is to kind of come back in phases with an action plan. If you decided to move forward with the preliminary assessment, we would come back with the results. Then we would move forward with the citizen outreach and public outreach plan. Of course, if we continue, as we continue to move forward, we would talk to the railroad and the Federal Railroad Administration, conduct the studies that were recommended in the preliminary assessment, and then work with our consultants, whether that's the bond council and other folks we bring on board, and then come back to council with some funding options, whether it's something you would like to do out of the general fund, our CIP fund, or through a special improvement district. So if the council decided to move forward, we could continue to move forward in phases and in steps and check in as we move through the process. So tonight, we're just asking for council consideration and some feedback as to whether you would like to proceed.
The nine quiet zones, do you know where they're located?
I do. They are located in Maricopa County in the Northwest Valley, Tempe, Phoenix, Chandler, Maricopa, Flagstaff, and Welton, which is east of Yuma.
And when you would say Chandler, and there's a total of nine, is it all of Chandler and that means one, or is it Chandler has one or two and that is part of the nine?
That's... There are two... You know, I'm going to have to get back to you on...
Okay, but...
But they're included. There might be some segments in there that I think Chandler might have two quiet zones, but...
But that would mean for Chandler, as an example, some spots in the city are quiet zones and others, other spots are not?
Correct.
To the council, we have some requests, and this might be the appropriate time to have the comments from the citizens, and then we'll open it up for council discussion. And I should... Do any of you have any questions for Andy at this point? Okay. Vice Mayor Cooper?
Mayor, these are the requests we have. Eric Larson will go first, then Bob Taylor would go second, and then looking at this, it's unclear whether Michael Saunders would like to speak or not. Michael, would you like to speak? Okay, so you'll go third. Okay, so Eric, Bob, and then Michael.
And Eric, as you'll lead the way here, it'll be similar. If you can state your name and if you're a Gilbert resident for the record, and then you'll be given three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Cooper, and council members. My name is Eric Larson, and I am a Gilbert resident. I'm here tonight to represent myself and a group of other Gilbert residents who strongly urge the town council to finally consider establishing quiet zones throughout the town of Gilbert. I know we're talking about something slightly different tonight, but I believe it all ties in together. As the town is already aware, this has already been brought up before in 2007 and 2009. Both times, the council decided not to take any action to silence the trains and create quiet zones. However, with the rapid expansion in the town of Gilbert and all of the development going on, there's never been a more important time to create quiet zones in the town of Gilbert. There are many communities that continue to develop and build very close to the railroad tracks, and in addition to that, there are quite a few schools that are now built and exist very close to the railroad tracks here in the town of Gilbert. As a matter of fact, one of the newest schools is right off of Wrecker near Pecos, right next to the railroad tracks, and right in the area where the trains sound their horn, and it's going to be at the loudest point. There are a lot of citizens here in Gilbert who are trying to voice their opinion and really haven't had the chance, but do want quiet zones. As you're aware, there are quiet zones in other cities here in Arizona, and if it can be done in those cities and towns, we believe that it can also happen here in Gilbert. So I'm just basically here this evening to represent myself and other residents in Gilbert who want quiet zones. We're not really big fans of establishing a special tax district, but we do urge the town to consider establishing quiet zones. We do have some supporters here tonight, and instead of having everybody speak tonight, we decided to just have one person. And what I'd like to do is, if anybody's here tonight who is in favor of having quiet zones, please stand up and be recognized by the council. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Cooper, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Eric, thank you. Bob Taylor, and then if Michael Saunders, you might even work your way down here for efficiency's sake.
Hi, my name's Bob Taylor. I'm a resident of Gilbert. I live about two miles from the railroad crossing at Cooper, just north of Warner.
And Bob, we may need to have you a little bit closer to the mic. I'm sorry you have to do that, but please.
All right. I'm concerned about the liability the town could be assuming were we to silence the train horns, but that's not why I advocate for the horns tonight. I advocate for the horns because they bring more than safety to our community. Perhaps some of us grew up near railroad tracks, and now when we hear our Gilbert trains, we are returned to those happy times. We remember the friendly sound of those trains in the night. Perhaps their horns were saying, "Then, I'm your friend. See you again. See you again. See you again." Please preserve for thousands of Gilbert kids the chance to have a lifelong friend. Perhaps some of us have been discouraged at times, disheartened. The trains may have brought a voice of encouragement. "I'm making it. I'm coming through. So can you. So can you. So can you." Please preserve for the citizens of Gilbert a voice of hope, especially in the night. Perhaps a husband had said to his dear wife, when both were well, "When you hear the train, it's me saying I love you. I love you. I love you." And then, as she neared the end of her brave struggle, she perhaps said to him, "When you hear the train, it's me saying I love you. I miss you. I love you." And now, every time the train goes by, he finds solace in those words. Please preserve the consolation the trains can bring. So what may be a nuisance to some may be comfort to another. For those who may object to the sound of the train horns, sound insulation techniques being applied to homes near airports might be helpful, but please remember the rest of us. Please preserve the friendly, encouraging, and comforting voice of the trains.
Bob, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the town council, my name is Michael Saunders. I live in Gateway Ranch in the town of Gilbert, and I rather than reiterate what others have already said, and with due respect to the gentleman who just spoke, I too grew up trackside. So I understand what you're saying. But going back to the comments that the city council made shortly ago, we're talking about a broader community betterment kind of issue here. When I first came to this neck of the woods, everything north of Williamsfield Road was corn, and everything south of it was cotton, and there were probably as many four-legged residents of Gilbert as there were two-legged. Gilbert is now a very urbanized, as they call it, the new urban center, and I think in deference to the previous speaker, that's something that needs to be considered. So, you know, at 3:30 in the morning, I mean, I don't mind a horn at 10 o'clock in the morning or 3:00 in the afternoon, but at 3:30 in the morning, that's a little tough to take, and I'm not nearly as close as a lot of other people in this room probably are. So the question I think that needs to be asked is, for the proverbial greater good of a broader community, I think that the town council and the town itself needs to proceed with this, with this motion and with the assessment that Ms. Welsh spoke about. And thank you for your time.
Michael, thank you. Andy, if you could return. Listening to the last few comments, and we do appreciate all who spoke, independent of... We'll get into the details in just a minute of the specific agenda item. The quiet zones for the 13 sites in Gilbert, we do have some preliminary estimates about what those would... What the cost would be, and in the council communication, there was an estimate of what a study might cost to make it more specific and to really prepare us for the next step. If, independent of whether or not this agenda item is approved tonight, which is really talking about how to potentially fund, there could be other funding sources. It could be, we don't do the study, we don't do the improvement district, we just go forward. How... When would we be prepared to have the discussion about whether or not to have a quiet zone and what the estimated cost would be? And would we need to do that $100,000 study first? Do we have some preliminary thoughts on that?
I would have to defer that to our town engineer, Mike Gillespie, in terms of the process and the order.
And I, as Mike's coming down, I bring that up because whether or not the agenda item is approved, there's still the discussion about whether or not to have a quiet zone. And so, Mike, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis and members of the council. I'm Mike Gillespie, town engineer. We had estimated about $100,000 to do this additional study beyond what had been done back in 2007. Things have changed in the way of federal regulations, and there are different technologies now that we need to evaluate. A study like that would take at least probably eight months or so to complete. It would give us a much, much better idea of what the costs are at each one of our intersections and crossings that we have. In addition, the pedestrian crossings for the trails were not included in that original estimate, and we are working with a MAC study right now to identify some things that would be done for those crossings as well. Most of the intersections that we have been improving over the last seven to eight years are... Have many of the components that we already... That we need in order to establish a quiet zone, but they don't have everything. And the only way that we can find that out is really to have meetings with the Federal Railway Association and also with UPRR and Arizona Department of Transportation. They call these a diagnostic review, and they actually meet and they discuss, they review what's out in the field and what additional improvements and treatments would be necessary at each one of those crossings in order to qualify for quiet zones.
Mike, if you were asked to prepare a council communication packet to detail the $100,000 study, or maybe there's a new estimate that would come, and preliminary estimates of the 13 quiet zones, what that might be, just so the council would have a feel for it, how far into the future would that be before you would think you could be ready to do that council communication?
To bring forth the study and...
And that, it would be for the council to have a vote and discussion with the citizens about whether to do the study and preliminary estimates to what the quiet zone... about whether to do the study and preliminary estimates to what the quiet zone cost might be, knowing that they would be refined and be more detailed at some future date.
That agenda item we could bring forward within a month.
Okay. All right, thank you. For the council, and I ask those questions for a purpose, but let's now get back to the specific agenda item, and that is whether or not to propose a feasibility study of whether or not a special improvement district would be something that we would consider. Is there some discussion on that? Vice Mayor Cooper?
Mike, you might come back up for just a second. I just wanted to see, I know it sounds like it'd be a different consultant that would do the $100,000 study versus this $5,800 study, but is there not, could there not be in that, if the council chose to proceed, in that $100,000 study, this question here about the different funding opportunities, could that not be part of the scope of work?
Mayor Lewis, council member Cooper, or Vice Mayor Cooper, yes, it could be incorporated into that overall scope of work, absolutely.
And just a follow-up question, because we have had citizen comments in the past that have said that neighboring communities did not hire a consultant to determine whether a quiet, or how to do, how to proceed on quiet zones. And just help us understand why that might not be the case here?
In the case...
Or is it?
Mayor Lewis and Vice Mayor Cooper, the issue here with us is that we do not have the resources, nor the, all of the expertise that we would need in order to do and accomplish that scope of work. And so, we would rely and solicit out for consultants that have done these types of projects for other local agencies here in Arizona, where we can, we can pick on their expertise and their knowledge in order to complete that study and to have a better handle on what the actual cost will be in the future.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Daniels?
Mike, two questions. Did I hear you say that you think that the actual feasibility study, the $100,000 study, if you will, would be more than that today? What, did I understand you correctly?
No. Mayor Lewis, councilmember Daniels, the $100,000 would include everything that we need to do in order to get a best estimate of the cost for construction to create those, that quiet zone.
And we have absolutely no ballpark right now as far as the low end and the high end of what it might cost to do train zones. And the reason I ask is because there's opportunity cost to things like this, and yes, we're hearing from the public that it's important to many residents that we do a quiet zone. We also have received lots of emails of individuals that say that they like the train horns. So we have to balance those two needs. In addition to that, if it's a $20 million project, let's just say, which I'm just grabbing from nowhere, then how will we fund that? Does it have to be done in phases? Is it, there's all these different questions that come along with funding. How does it fit into our CIP plan, our five-year CIP plan? If it's $2 million, that's a little bit more manageable of a dollar amount that we may be able to incorporate into savings from other road projects or whatnot. So I guess what I'm asking is, is if we go forward and spend $100,000, do we really need to have the funding source identified prior to spending that quantity of dollars? Is that, that's generally the way that we work as a council, that we identify our funding source for our project, and then we move forward with the studies and identify what the opportunity cost is?
Mayor Lewis, councilmember Daniels, that's a very good observation, very good It won't be 20 million, I can tell you that. You know, it will probably be less than 5 million. Beyond that, I'm, you know, I'm sort of stretching, because it just depends a lot. I think that is even the high end. I believe that if you do this initial study, that will answer some of your questions as far as can an assessment or can an improvement district be a part, be a part of that solution? It might not be the whole solution, but I think we can do the research and we can find out whether it's been done, it's feasible, and what the methodology might be. So we could bring that back to you first in order to see if that is an acceptable way to fund this type of improvements. Beyond that, I think a lot of the other questions that you asked would be a part of that $100,000 study in order to, in order for us to put together some recommendations and do additional research on other funding that might be available.
Okay, Mayor Lewis, that helped me a lot. I don't know if it helped anyone else.
Yeah.
I feel like under $5 million is a much more manageable number. We will likely have to do it in phases. If it comes from general fund, we would, and there's lots of different funding sources, but understanding what the funding source is, is the first step to moving forward with the project. And that's generally how we move forward with most of our CIP plan. And so, I would suggest that we move forward with the $5,800 study to help us understand what those, where those dollars are coming from, and if it's allowable to do an improvement district. If it's not, let's let our staff identify those things, and then we have another decision to make at that point.
Town manager Banjar, wish to speak, please.
Mike, could you, we had the study done, the complementary study done, I believe, back in 2007? Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
At that time, they gave it, gave us an estimate, not to completely put you on the hot seat, Mike, but could you let us know what their estimate was at that time? I know we've done some improvements to some intersections since that time and done some of the upgrades, but maybe give them a little bit better ballpark, at least from the 2007 study?
I'm gonna, I'm hoping that I'm close here, but I believe it was about 1.2 to 1.3 million.
Okay, thank you, Mike. We will not hold you to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels, I want to echo a comment you made, and I think we're similar. And I realize I typically like to hear from councilmembers and maybe jump in at the end, and I'm going early this time. I'm actually, I was not in favor of a special improvement district, and I was, but I was thinking similar, that we have a lot of residents that are anxious for this decision to be made. And I know we've kind of, every two years, brought it up again, and the same thought that if we have an estimate on the funding, big picture, and how it would be funded, then I would feel comfortable in saying, "Let's move forward with $100,000." And the reason why, you know, you would think the $5,800, I could feel good about it, but maybe it's not needed. If, in the council communication that would come back, if we have other funding sources that make sense to us, then we wouldn't have to study the feasibility of a special improvement district. So I'm in favor of more research and having a formal discussion about whether or not we would fund it with some more details there, and that would be the decision and discussion I would like as opposed to this. Tonight, I'm not in favor of voting for $5,800 unless, in the dialogue you just had, if the $5,800 study is really a subset of the $100,000 study and would help, I could open up to it. But otherwise, I'd rather give direction that we ask our staff to move forward to prepare a council communication which includes how it would be funded. Now, with that said, I don't know if that is similar, and whether any other council members want to jump in, and we can make quick decisions possibly, or other discussions. Councilmember Peterson?
I had a couple of questions to start with, that, the concern about liability to the town, just, I know this is further off, we're talking about how would we fund it, and it is the first question to answer, I agree, but just to ask it. What, is there liability to the town? Should we institute quiet zones? Does that raise the town's liability? Do you know? Do you have that, council?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Peterson. I'm not exactly certain. I assume that it would be similar to what we have now, that it's a highly regulated industry such that if you have quiet zones, there are standards in place, and if you comply with those standards, you have, you know, you've, you've done what's all that's necessary or all that's reasonable. So I don't know that having quiet zones or not having quiet zones would either raise or lower our liability as long as we adhere to the standards set forth by the federal government, the Federal Transportation Administration with regards to the conditions that must be in place for quiet zones.
And Councilmember Peterson, with that feedback, that would be something, again, if we ask our town staff to take a month, month and a half, two months to do a council communication. I would like to have more research and have that included in the packet.
The other question I had is about property values. Are there any expert sources or any real data to show that a quiet zone could raise property values for those homes that are near the tracks?
Mayor Lewis, councilmember Peterson, that's a really good question. I don't know that I can answer that or anybody until we were to get into some of the specifics. I would hope that the research that we do on this item before you tonight would identify how we define a benefit to the properties through a quiet zone. But that's, that's going to have to come through, I think, some additional research.
Would that question be answered by this 56, or whatever, $6,000-ish dollars we're
Mayor Lewis, councilman Peterson, that particular question in terms of the property values would not be answered, but the question about the benefit and who would benefit would be answered as part of the preliminary assessment.
However, could, Mayor Lewis is talking about some other questions he would like to know answers to if we go forward. Could that be a question we could get answered? Maybe it's not a part of that particular study, but is there a way to do that without extra expenditures between now and maybe a future meeting about this?
Mayor Lewis, councilman Peterson, certainly we can look into that and get some answers to those questions.
And to the council, I, the discussion I'll have us focus on, and we may be ready to refer it, would be, do we want to have this feasibility study approved, which focuses on funding and related to a special improvement district, or not? And then, we could give some direction for further studies. Are there, are we ready to vote? Are we ready?
I just, one other, my thought on it, I don't really want to spend $5,800 or $1 until I know what the overall cost is going to be, and I'm, but I don't want to spend $100,000 to find out. I just, I mean, I wish we were calling it the $30,000 study, not the hundreds, because whatever consultant is going to bid on it now has a, but anyway, what I'm really, is there no way, no other way to get us a ballpark figure? You know, we have the 1.2 million or whatever you mentioned earlier, and we've got some higher numbers. I don't want to spend $1 until I at least know where we might be headed. And so, I was just talking.
And I want to jump in. I agree with that, and that's why, unless, Andy, you need to clarify and steer me that I'm misunderstanding this, the council communication that I'm reading is whether or not, and the benefits and the feasibility of creating a special improvement district, which I'm not that concerned about that issue. I'm concerned about whether or not the big picture would say, "Let's do a quiet zone or not." And so, my misunderstanding is, is the $5,800 to be very specific to determine whether or not we should have a special improvement district?
The, Mayor Lewis, the preliminary assessment is going to provide us information as to whether it's legal, some proposed methodology of how that would be done, and then a recommendation for what our next step should be in terms of other consultants we should bring onboard.
And with that, that's not my primary concern. It could be, but until, as Vice Mayor Cooper said, we decide whether or not, and Councilmember Daniels said it very well too, if we have the funding for it and estimates for that. Now, to Vice Mayor Cooper, I think with some of the studies, there's still going to be a range, and it can be brought closer, but we'd have to realize that range, high-low, do we want to spend $100,000 at that point? That's what I'm hearing tonight.
I agree. And my reason is all about priorities, and so I got to understand the couple, if it's a couple million, we got to have a conversation as a team with the community with respect to other competing priorities we have. We have a parks master plan, many of the items in there are unfunded, there, you know, there's infrastructure and all these other things that we need to talk about, and, but to start pushing dominoes over, I'm not, I'm not exactly ready for that. And I actually think this funding, this, it just feels to me like this is a question that we could maybe answer another way if it proves necessary to answer it on the improvement district.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, this issue is actually, for me, one of the, probably the hardest issue on the agenda tonight. I usually feel like I can make a decision that's clear to me, right or wrong on principle, and this one's harder than that for me. If it's structured in such a way that those who want it and benefit from it also pay for it, and they're the ones getting to make that decision, that I'm fine, I think I could be fine with it. But the feedback's been very mixed. Even tonight, we had folks stand up who want it, don't like the idea of the district. And one thing I'm not in favor of, I am not in favor of a model where one person is forced to pay for the benefit of another person. So those who benefit should pay. That's why I asked for this other model. Plus, I know that our funding sources are limited. So I think it kind of addresses both of those issues for me. So at the end of the day, though, will those folks want it once they know the price that they're going to have to pay for it in their property taxes? Maybe they won't. If they don't, I don't want to force it on them, for sure. So there's so much more information we need to get before we can make a decision, and I'm sensitive of what Councilmember Cooper said, but we're in kind of a catch-22. We want to know if they want to pay for it before we spend their money, but we need to spend money in order to know if they want to pay for it, because we have to find out what it costs. It's a chicken and the egg. So it's kind of a tricky situation. I wish we could find out some of these answers without the $5,800.
And let me, Councilmember Peterson, excuse my interruption, but back to Andy. It is not going to answer whether the citizens want to pay for it or not. It is going to answer whether it's legal and the details of that. And that goes back to, I would propose tonight that we not approve it, and I realize there is some cost in asking staff to do some more research, but that's, that's what I'm hearing from the group, is that we need some more information. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I like, I like that approach. I definitely support that, and maybe at a study session or at another appropriate time, we have a chance to just define the scope of work so that we'll have the answers that we need, you know, to move forward instead of water drip this project along.
Councilmember Cook?
I would love to find out, as Councilmember Daniels said, the high and the low of what that range is. I know you said five, and I know we talked about this last time, Chandler had 6 million for maybe three, and, you know, as much as I would love to do the division, I got, you know, my hand slapped, that may not be right, because our crossings are obviously different. But I would love to know the high and low, you know, what that number would be, you know, total for the 13 crossings. I mean, that would be helpful for me.
And I think with the emails and the citizens here tonight, that's the request that's being made of the council.
Yeah, I think so too. And in a district, I'm with you, Mayor, I think that...
So I will entertain a motion, and then we can give some direction. Well, I think the motion is not to approve it. Or, that's my vote.
Mayor Lewis, I would like to request that we be really specific about what questions we do want answered. So maybe individually, or if citizens have questions about things that we need staff to do some research on before the next meeting, that we make sure that we compile those questions, so the next time we have this discussion, we really do come together with, you know, the next steps.
Thank you. I think you've picked up several questions that are on that list, and there may be more. And Councilmember Daniels opens the door for councilmembers to give more questions, and then for citizens too. So to our town attorney, and this is clarif, and I, you're about to hear that I'm making an assumption that we're not ready to vote for this. We still could entertain a motion and be very specific about whether to approve or not approve the feasibility study, or if I'm hearing from the council, we want to give direction for more research, do we even need to vote?
Mayor, members of the council, a vote or a motion perhaps might assist the staff in knowing precisely the questions wishing to be, wished to be addressed, but you can give direction without, without a vote.
Okay, thank you. That leaves the door open, so...
Mayor, are you, just so that I understand, are you still interested in getting answers to some of the questions that feasibility study was designed to answer? Or you're not as interested in the improvement Or you're not as interested in the improvement district idea at all?
I'm not. And I could be, but not initially. It's whether or not, as a council and to the town, we think we need to have quiet zones. And so that means we need to have some questions answered, the funding sources, a lot of the questions we just brought up.
I'll make a motion. I move that we continue this item to, how much time do you need, Mike? It might depend on our list of questions, but, a couple, you want in months, six weeks? What do you need?
Six weeks, please.
Okay. I move that we continue this item to six weeks from tonight, whenever that council meeting is that falls right around that, that we have additional questions answered by our staff about some of the conditions, Mayor, that you spoke about, as well as a preliminary question answered about the scope of dollars. I mean, that's, everyone's been asking. We need to know the range of commitment. Anything else?
October 24th, I think would be the date.
October 24th, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. That motion, and second, please vote. That's approved with a seven of a vote. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, I believe that I was the one that asked for 11, 12, and 13 to be polled, and that is Chief Joe Bush. We have a fire station, and for the community to hear about it, give us a quick overview, and then I think we'll be ready to proceed with 11, 12, 13.
Okay, Mayor Lewis, members of council. This project is to relocate Station 7 from its current location on Cooper, just north of Elliot, to Cooper and Warner. When Station 7 was originally built, the current Station 7 was originally built, that was over 20 years ago. It was part of a plan that, at the time, Rural Metro Corporation, the contract service provider for the town, put together without, the true scope, I guess, of what build-out would look like for the town and the service area requirements. Station 10 was built a couple of, or last year opened, and it is within a mile of Station 7's current location. So in the interest of coverage of the town and a better system coverage, we came forward with the request to relocate Station 7 to Cooper and Warner and provide a better response time coverage to the southwest part of the town.
Thank you for that update. I will entertain a motion on 11, 12, and 13.
I move to approve 11, 12, and 13.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Council, okay. We had a tie for second between Councilmember Ray and Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Ray, thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, I believe that we have completed all of the consent calendar items.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Public hearing, do we have requests to speak from the citizens?
We do have a request on item 25, and you'll note that item 24 is going to be continued to the October 3 meeting.
Thank you. To councilmembers, on 26 through 31, do you have a sense, Vice Mayor Cooper? So let me just, Councilmember Peterson and down the line, are there some of the public hearing items that you wanted to have discussed?
27.
Okay. 6. And Councilmember Cook? 29, okay. Vice Mayor Cooper, we have a request to speak on 25. That would mean that the one agenda item that we did not have anyone wanting to speak on is 28, 30, and 31. Does that sound? Is that correct?
28, 30, and 31.
So before, to the council, before I open up 28, 30, and 31, let me just turn to my right and left and confirm council is okay with that? Okay. I open the public hearing on agenda items 28, 30, and 31, and I close the public hearing on agenda items 28, 30, and 31, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve items 28, 30, and 31 as presented.
Second.
Okay, with that motion, second, please vote. Those who approve with a seven of a vote, thank you. I now open the public hearing on agenda item 20, and just a quick pause on 24. Town Attorney Hamlin, do we need 24 to formally with a vote be moved, continued? I think I just answered yes. So Vice Mayor Cooper, before we move on on 24?
Mayor, I move that we continue item 24 until the October 3 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, and second, please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a seven of a vote. Agenda item 25, I now open the public hearing on agenda item 25, and Vice Mayor Cooper, why don't we proceed? If you could give us just a quick overview on 25, and then we'll have the citizen who has requested to speak come forward.
How do I move this?
This is for 25.
Mayor Lewis, councilmembers, this is a rezoning case in field project of 5.8 acres south of the relocation site for Fire Station 7 that Chief Joe Bush just confirmed, that it will start in the spring of 2014 with tentative completion in June. The applicant came to propose the usage of the acreage to the south, which now is reduced because of the fire station plan. That is the general location on the screen of the intersection where the side is southeast of the intersection. This exhibit shows the surrounding transition desoning districts. We have a concentration of commercial at the intersection, quite a bit of single-family six, single-family seven to the south, and single-family six again beyond the commercial on the west side of Cooper. The applicant proposes a subdivision that will be gated with 27 lots and is not asking for any deviations from the land development code standards for single-family six. And also, they are maintaining the range of density in the land use classification, as called in the general plan. So that is a positive. This is the aerial map of the area incorporating or plotting the plans for the subdivision. As you can see in this exhibit, the entrance to the south is the two-way entrance gated, and the northern one will be only exit. I verify with traffic engineering, and a subdivision like this will generate approximately between 150 and 200 outbound trips. So those two houses that are in front of the exits, and the exits and the entrance exit to the south will be affected, like they expressed at the planning commission meeting, by the lights possibly of the vehicles coming out. That was discussed at the planning commission, was not really an issue. They recommended to the town council approval 7-0. And they recommended that a meeting be held. And we facilitated, staff facilitated, a meeting between the applicant Ryland Homes and the two property owners, and they agreed that they will come up to Ryland with a contract and a plan that, something that is reasonable, to provide a vegetative hedge in their property. So that is the, an item that is still going on, verifying with the representative legal counsel of the applicant. They haven't come back to them yet. We'll be talking about that from now until the preliminary plat gets approved. Staff recommends approval. We don't have really any issues with the rezoning of that, those two small parcels into a single-family six, because you saw the transition of zoning districts that already exist. This is a larger scale of how the applicant have maximized the buffering across from 130th, because we have white fence subdivision across the street, which is a large enclave of acre lots property that annexed into the town three years ago, in 2006 or '07. And more than that, I think it is now. But they were annexed not long ago. And the emphasis of buffering houses that are going to be backing onto the offices and the commercial to the north, which by code will have to be built with single-story homes. So the street layout, the placement of the open space at the frontage, as well as between the future subdivision and existing commercial, maximize the buffering the best possible way. And that was appreciated by the owners of white fence farms, as well as the future prospect buyers of houses there, to have that open space in between them and the residential. Those are enlargements of what they proposed to do in the open space at the frontage and to the end of the subdivision backing onto the commercial. And more details will be presented to the planning commission next month when we come for the preliminary plat submitted or proposal to them. And I think that's the details about the materials, palette, colors, and improvements onsite that it will provide. With that, I conclude my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the staff is recommending the adoption of the ordinance and move forward. Thank you.
Any council questions at this time? The applicant, would the applicant like to say a few comments before we have our comment from the citizen? Please.
Okay, to go back. Okay, let me go, that one? Okay, let me go, loading. Let me see.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Stephen Earl. I am the council for Ryland Homes. And Reed Porter, the president of Ryland Homes here in the Arizona area, is with me tonight. Obviously, staff has given you a thorough report and given you, well, a good summary tonight. We appreciate their recommendation for support, as well as the planning commission. There were neighbors at the planning commission hearing. We did sit down, as Maria indicated, in a meeting after that, and came to the, I think, good resolution of the one issue that was kind of outstanding, and that is the potential for people exiting our project to have headlights that would go across the street and could negatively affect at least two of the three homes. The one in the middle wouldn't necessarily have direct headlights, but what we came up with was, after discussing it with the traffic engineer and with Maria, was to have hedges on their side of the street. You may have remembered, the landscape plan that was up there a little bit earlier has heavy landscaping on our side of the street, as well as the gates. So we thought we'd done all we could do on our side, plus the very deep setbacks. But on their side, for that headlight issue, if they go to a contractor and come up with a plan for how to put in a row of hedges along the front, then they could come back to us, and we'd be happy to work with them to get that installed. And so the kind of ball's in their court. We committed to assist in that effort, and we're still committed. And so as soon as the plan comes forward, we'll work it out. Other than that, I'd be glad to hear what the concern might be that I'm not aware of, and then respond perhaps after that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, proceed, please.
Mayor, the citizen wishing to speak is Mr. Owen Bainham. Sir, please come forward and let us know if you're a Gilbert resident.
Owen, thank you for coming. As Vice Mayor Cooper said, if you can state your name, and if you're a Gilbert resident, then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. My name is Owen Bainham, and I live at 507 West Knox Road. And I'd like to make an amendment to Maria's comment that most of the homes, the 86 homes in White Fence Farms, were recently annexed. My home was built in 1985 and has always been in the town of Gilbert. I've given you a copy of what I'd like to read. I'm not very good at this. It's really new to me. I'm shaky, and you can see, I'm just a regular guy.
Thank you. And it is a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you so much. It was really hot mowing my yard today in 111 degrees. September 1997, we moved to White Fence Farms neighborhood. I'm sure that you have seen the concrete metal signs erected at 131st, 131st Street and Warner Road about a mile from here. It's a unique neighborhood, clearly separated from its neighboring subdivisions by its larger lots. Access to the canal and bridge across the canal is a big attraction to White Fence Farms. Every day, every day, people from other neighborhoods come to walk the long quiet streets of White Fence Farms. All of our homes were custom-built. No two of the 86 or so homes are the same. This proposed cookie cutter zoning will severely diminish the quality of life that we have lived for years, and the quality of life for others who come to walk our quiet streets. Shortly after we moved here, the cornfield east of 132nd Street was developed into Raven Ranch subdivision. Their homes on 132nd Street were built on one-half acre lots. To me, this is okay. Also okay was their green belt retention basin located at the intersection of 132nd Street and Warner Road. They're good neighbors. With existing zoning of this subject property, potentially, I haven't seen these maps, potentially, when someone drives down 130th Street, they'll pass 2.9 homes on the west side of, for each one home, they pass on the east side. Proposed zoning will change this to passing 7.26 homes on the west side for one home on the east. What do we get from this? What do we, neighbors, get from this? Only added traffic and congestion and devalued property. About 14 years ago, the zoning for this parcel was changed to allow for Sonic and urgent care. We told, we were told that a nice school would be built if the change went through. We were concerned about the added congestion, but were promised that school buses would not be a problem. Well, they aren't a problem, because there's no school. And what do we, neighbors, get from this? Every day, much traffic headed to the communities, the neighborhoods of Cobble Creek and Templeton Manor subdivisions from westbound Warner Road use 130th Street, and that's the street we're talking about. This speedway allows drivers to avoid the left turn at Warner and Cooper, at the Warner and Cooper light. Several years ago, the neighbors on 130th Street wanted to show, slow the traffic by installing speed humps. Well, residents from the other subdivisions and delivery merchants, UPS and FedEx, outnumbered White Fence Farms meetings at this meeting. We have no speed pumps, but we do have fast traffic. Just a few hours ago, when I stopped for 20 seconds to read the notice to confirm the time of this meeting, three cars sped by me and to turn west on Nunley Road. Three. That was just in 20 seconds. "We who live in White Fence Farms enjoy our quality of life, just as others enjoy it too. With this proposed REED zoning and the building of cookie cutter homes, our quality of living will be severely compromised and shipped off as cash to fill the pockets of a developer, someone who lives in Thunder Bay, Ontario, Canada."
Owen, thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you very much.
Councilmembers, questions? Mr. Earl, please.
Mayor, we appreciate the comments made by the neighbor. We have not had occasion to meet with him. He was not one of the three neighbors that appeared at the Planning Commission, and so we didn't get a chance to meet with him after. The neighbors directly affected by our case, the ones across the street, were actually quite complimentary of the fact that we were building a project on this vacant 6.5 acres because this really is a classic infill case. All of the property at this intersection, surrounding all of this area, has, has been built for over 12 years. And yet, this 6.5 acre parcel has laid vacant simply because of its size and location. Earlier, when there was an outlet onto Warner Road, there was a potential for, for maybe having access that direction, but the fire station went in instead. And so it landlocked this parcel to have access only to 130th Street. When you have a 6.5 acre parcel, there's lots of different kinds of things that might go on an infill site like that, but all of them are difficult. And so when you see this transitional map, you can see that R1-6, or, or, excuse me, the residential or a single-family six is the predominant transitional zone. Now, having said that, we realize that what we were going to be doing could have an impact on 130th Street. And that was candidly a conversation at the Planning Commission. The amount of cars are going up and down 130th. So let me show you. This shows the greater area and shows 130th Street in context with the property in question tonight, which is in yellow, as well as the White Fence Farm folks that, where the gentleman who just spoke lives, along with the people right across the street. And we did hear about the folks who are in subdivisions to the south, which are very similar to the homes we're building, only ours are going to obviously be newer and much more expensive. But, but having said that, those folks do sometimes use 130th Street, and so there's, there's cars on the road. And one of the things that I think staff and we certainly agreed on, and I think even the neighbors came to appreciate it, is that right now, it's a straight shot from Knox up to Warner. And, and you go right by this vacant parcel and don't slow down. When we build our homes, obviously, people coming in and out of this very subdivision, as close as it is to Warner Road, will have the tendency to calm traffic down. Our cars can't speed because we can't get enough going. We're too close to Warner Road. So our people will be coming out at a slow and, and going up towards Warner, or coming from Warner down into their, into the project. We think that will have a calming effect. And as I think the town's traffic engineer pointed out at the Planning Commission hearing, the number of cars we're adding to the system, especially at peak hours, when, when cars is the most challenging, is very small. It was so small that it didn't even justify a traffic report. So for that reason, and the fact that we kind of understand the comment, I guess, the cookie cutter, but we strongly disagree with that. These homes are going to be valued at, you know, $350,000 to $650,000. And they're going to be behind a gated, a beautiful gated entrance. It looks like this. This will be a beautiful enclave of homes, 27 opportunities for new residents to move to Gilbert and call this area home. We think it's a great transition from the commercial, which you can see, this is the best exhibit here. You can see that this parcel backs up to commercial and backs up to the Sonic and will back up to the fire station. So for all these reasons, we believe this is, ah, did I put it upside down? All these reasons, we think it's an excellent transition. Obviously, staff and Planning Commission both agreed. And the neighbors most directly affected across the street are not here tonight because we reached an understanding with them.
To Owen, just to make a comment, the town council has had opportunities where we were very concerned about your subdivision. Your homes were there first. And as was just mentioned, I think the biggest concern we had were those on 130th Street and especially the three homes that were right in front of this proposed subdivision. And I know in receiving feedback, the council did understand that initially, at least, and I may have forgotten, but I know at least two of the three neighbors were not in favor. And so there was a lot of work done of how to mitigate and address some of the issues, and so that has happened. And I, we have, as a council, have not talked about this, so I'm not implying that we have a decision at this point. I just know that I wanted to point out that very concerned about that neighborhood and how the neighbors felt, and especially those that are living by it. So I, I present that, and now I'll open it up for council discussion. Comments, questions you may have, and then we can proceed. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Mr. Earl. The question is, is it a nice offer to perhaps pay for the hedges across the street relative to the, to mitigate the headlights? Have any of the neighbors taken you up on that offer? Have you heard anything from them?
Well, actually, Mayor, Councilman Taylor, that's actually what the meeting was for. We held the meeting in the staff offices across the street. Those three neighbors, I think husband and wife attended, and they were the direct, and two of the three will be affected by headlights during nighttime hours. And so that was where we reached this understanding at the end of the meeting, that if they would simply bring forward a, a plan for those hedges with a contract, then we'd be happy to take care of it. We were reluctant to go on their land and build something on their land. We said, we're going to build a whole lot of stuff on our side to mitigate, but on your side, if you have a contract and have a contractor, give us what the cost is, and we'll be happy to take care of it. So that's how we reached the conclusion at that meeting, and, and those residents felt it was appropriate.
Thank you. Maria, I have a question for you on the traffic study. Did it show the average speed of traffic on 130th?
Councilmember Taylor, Mayor Lewis, and councilmembers, I will have to ask the traffic engineer if he is in the audience. Not tonight. He checked for, it was not a, a traffic, three pages report that was completed and submitted with the first submittal of documents. I verified with him what was the, this morning, what was the outbound trips. And he confirmed that information for me, but in specific, to answer your question, I don't have the information with me at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, I think we may be ready for a motion as a council, but I did just want to make the, a statement that our Planning Commission did discuss this at length, and I'm grateful to hear that a remedy has been identified for those three neighbors that are immediately adjacent to the property. I do feel like, Mayor, this is a, a great use. Without Warner Road access, this becomes very difficult to develop anything other than residential. And so I, I understand Mr. Owen's concerns. I certainly am, am sensitive to those. I also recognize that this is probably a best-case scenario for this particular infill piece of property. And so, again, grateful that, that all parties have been able to work together on those issues that we can address. But Mayor, at this time, I would like to, oh, one other.
Councilmember Daniels, thank you. We did just receive another request to speak, and so we'll ask Vice Mayor Cooper to proceed.
I'd like to call Lynn Stenett up.
And Lynn, as you saw, if you can state your name and whether you're a Gilbert resident for the record. And then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Stenett. I'm a Gilbert resident since 1972. We bought our home and property on 130th Street, and I've lived there continuously for 40-odd years. My main problem tonight is to welcome the subdivision that they're bringing in.
And Lynn, we'll ask, ask you also to get real close to the mic, please.
Okay. I'm thrilled we're having some houses there instead of the weed problem that we've had for 40 years and the debris and the dump ground and the dirt and all the other stuff. I'm happy with the houses coming in, but I'm not happy with the speeding and the traffic that they're going to bring to that street. We already have Cobble Creek tearing up and down that street. Sorry. I'm still dehydrated. I've been overseas for five months, and I'm still jet-lagging. The, the traffic problem is just horrendous on that street, honestly. I had the traffic manager come and put in one of those speed limit signs, and he was there for three or four weeks, I guess, and there were speeders. I've had numerous animals killed in front of that house because they stretch it right from coming in on Nunley, and they speed right down to Warner Road. When we want to get out on Warner, we can't because of the traffic. We have to go through Cobble Creek to exit on one way, and if you want to turn right, that's your only option on Warner, to go to Gilbert Road. With another 50-odd cars coming in and out of 130th Street, the traffic congestion is going to be horrendous. I don't care if they are going a little slow to turn in there. They're still going to go fast when they come out because they're going to want to turn right coming out of their subdivision, going past my house and to get on to Cooper because of the congestion in the afternoons and mornings. I would love to have a speed bump or two put on that street. I don't care where they put it, but we've got to do something about the traffic that is going through there. We've had some terrible accidents in front of my house, and I'd like it to stop. And it's just plain going too fast and too many cars. Thank you.
Lynn, thank you, and welcome home. It's good to have you back. And if it were an agenda item, we'd love to talk to you about 40 years in the area. The two town sta, two town leadership, we can give some direction. We did hear some good feedback related to traffic that is not, part of it is, of course, part of the decision, but some of that can also be discussed and public safety officials to do some follow-up and for the residents who have spoken. Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
Just a quick question, and maybe this is a question for Chief Joe Bush. If Station 7 goes there, typically, we have a, a light for the, your vehicles to come out of the building. Is there going to be a light at that Station 7?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Cook, there, there will be a light at Station 7, and it's our intent to have that on Warner Road, not at 130th Street, so we can exit on to Warner.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I close the public hearing for Agenda Item 25, and we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the zoning Z13-13 and adopt, excuse me, approve the findings and adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And Mayor Lewis, real quick, before we do the vote, I do want to just assure our last speaker that we are working on a traffic calming policy for the town. That's something part of our transportation master plan currently. We haven't funded that program, but we are looking for ways to fund it, to come up with solutions to calm traffic. But in the meantime, I think Chief Dorn would probably be open to looking for opportunities to, to assist on that street. He's very open to that. Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you. So with the motion and second, please vote. That is approved with a seven of vote. Thank you. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Item 26.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Amy Temmestown, Planning Department. Is there a specific question I can answer, or would you like an overview of the project? Or?
Councilmember Daniels?
I actually just want to make a statement more than anything. Sorry to drag you up there, Amy. I've been looking at some of these subdivisions that are SFD and also what someone might consider to be cluster, zero-lot line type homes. And I'm noticing in a lot of the areas that have already been built, that we have a parking and a street width problem. And I think that's only going to increase as we continue to build these. So while not directly against this project, I would like to see us move forward with this particular project, but I would like us as a council, working with town staff, to come up with a policy in regards to, it would actually be an extension of a, of a current policy that we already have, where we look at the number of parking spaces available. Most of these homes do not have driveways. They do not have parking pads. Most of these individuals are parking on the street or in their own garage, where if you have multiple cars or you're using your garage for storage instead, it's creating a real problem on, on some of these streets, especially for our trash collection and also for public safety. So I think we need to have a comprehensive discussion with staff about how to, how to alleviate that problem. So that's all I really wanted to say on that. I, I think it's going to be an issue on this property as well, but we have a policy in place and they are following it. So I, I would actually move forward with a motion, Mayor.
Before I entertain a motion, so the town leadership, is that noted? Thank you. I'll ask you to follow up on that. Thank you. So I entertain a motion. Oh, excuse me, I close the public hearing on Agenda Item 26, and we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve zoning case Z13-16, approve the findings, and adopt the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Without motion, second, please vote. That is approved with a seven of vote. I open the public hearing on Agenda Item 27.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis, members of the council. I'd be happy to give you a presentation or just answer any questions, whatever you want.
Thank you. We didn't, Vice Mayor Cooper, we don't have any requests to speak on 27, and so it was Councilmember Peterson, please.
Mayor, I just wanted to hit a couple points in this, really, literally, too. The front setback variance, if you will, are changed through the PAD. You know, as I've talked to Nathan about this and based on my own understanding of it, I think there is a practical interest in, in making sure that there's enough space for a car to park in the driveway without overhanging the public sidewalk. That matters. But I think with the setbacks that have been specified here, at 25 for front-facing and 15 for side, with the side entrance, you end up with probably another good 10 feet of, of space to park because of the curve and, but you probably have enough space. So I'm not as concerned about that. I think that that's okay. The other issue that's here is the percent coverage. And I talked to Nathan about this a little bit, and if he has new thoughts, I welcome them, but it's difficult for me to determine what direct purpose there is in a percent coverage. There's some potential secondary indirect purposes that could be served, but those purposes are served by other regulations that we already have, and I think that they're appropriate. So I really don't have a problem with giving the exception to the percent coverage. The only thing I'm concerned about is allowing something for one developer or one business that we don't allow for everyone. And with this particular issue of percent coverage, I'm really not sure what purpose it's serving. And so my point in all of this is, I don't know if anyone else want to make the motion, but I'm ready to approve it, but I would like to add direction to staff, to just put an item on the agenda to discuss it. The council can decide whether or not they, they believe in the merits of, of the percent coverage or not, but I just think it'd be something, be nice to allow everyone access to rather than just do it for this one.
Thank you. And I think that goes back to our last item for town leadership to have some dialogue on this. So, so what you're saying, you're ready to proceed, and before I would close the public hearing then on 27, is there any other council comment or discussion?
I just wanted to clarify that, that, that direction's been given, but it doesn't necessarily need to be part of the motion tied to this specific applicant's case, correct?
It doesn't have to be. As long as there were either the mayor or two others who agreed to get it on there, then it will be done. I just want to make sure. If it doesn't happen that way, I'll put it in the motion.
Let's, I, I will give that direction with your comments to have town leadership follow up on that. Thank you.
Awesome.
I close the public hearing on 27, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to make the findings of fact and adopt the attached ordinance approving Z13-17.
Is there a second?
Second.
Without motion, second, please vote. That's approved with a seven of vote. That's approved with a seven vote. Thank you. Before I open the public hearing on 29, I'll look for some direction from our town attorney. In the study session two days ago, we clarified that the first step would be to either revoke or rescind, or I guess the question, how we want to proceed. And so because this is under the public hearing, do I go ahead and open the public hearing and we have that discussion first? Or do we have that discussion and then determine whether we have a public hearing that is open?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the council, your second suggestion was the correct one. The first issue to be decided is whether the council wishes to reconsider its action of approximately four or five weeks ago in establishing its, passing the ordinance it did. That can be done without a public hearing. Now it's only on the agenda to be reconsidered. And so that would be the first discussion vote. That can be done without a public hearing, as mentioned. Thereafter, if that motion passes and the matter is to be reconsidered, the council, the mayor, you can therefore open a public hearing and have a discussion as to whether, now that it's properly before the council and to be reconsidered, whether it needs to be repealed or other options need to be entertained.
And is the reconsideration a majority vote? So if it's 4-3 to reconsider, then we would have a public hearing and continue on. If it's not, then we move on to other agenda items.
The matter's concluded if the motion reconsider fails to get a majority.
So to the council, let's open that discussion on whether we should reconsider this topic and when we're ready, we can have a vote on it. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, it may just make the most sense to go ahead and let Eddie make his motion. He's the one that has to do it. We can do a second. If there's debate after that, fine. If not, then we can vote and just see what happens.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
Let me share just a little bit before I make that motion. This was probably one of the few agenda items that really made my spirit restless. It was very difficult for me to go through this. There's a lot of emotion for me, but also I was trying to think of the practicality of what we did. After we voted on August 1st, shortly after, there was a incident, an unfortunate incident that happened in a community in Pennsylvania where a gunman, or an individual, I should say, a disgruntled individual entered into their public building based upon a, we'll call it a dispute on property. The individual walked into their public building and there was a kind of a planning meeting of staff and residents, and this individual walked into their public building and had a rifle, like an AR-15. And he knew where the meeting was at and, from my understanding, from reading the news, shot through the walls and inflicted casualties within that room. After he had unloaded his magazine of bullets, he went back outside to get another weapon to inflict additional injury. Fortunately, the parks director apprehended the individual and then that ended the incident. So as I thought about our vote on August 1st, and again, this incident happened, you know, a couple of days later, it really made me really think about the things, some of the discussion that we had in the council as relates to the lockers. And I think a lot of you know that I wanted larger lockers because I don't want, you know, really any firearms here in the public buildings. But in that incident, you know, that individual walked in, there was no security, no police officer, and was able to, you know, actually murdered some innocent citizens. So as I thought about our vote, about the idea of the honor system was really kind of in my mind, I personally felt that my vote did not give enough protection and security to our residents, our business leaders that come to do business here in the building, and even our team members or our employees. So in my mind, that I asked for the reconsideration only because I believe that we need additional safety, additional security, additional protection. I'm not sure exactly how that will work, but that's the reason why I like the reconsideration. And I would love to have some more additional dialogue about what level of additional protection that we can provide. But that's my reason for the reconsideration. I just don't feel that the honor system truly protects, you know, individuals that come into this building. There could be an individual that could carry a firearm and that we'll never know. And if we can provide additional security, I'm more in favor of doing that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we do the reconsideration of Ordinance 2439.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor, can I ask a couple of questions or comments? One of my concerns with this, and I've asked dozens and dozens of residents' opinions on this issue, and the consensus from all but one has been that they would prefer to look at the option of allowing guns in public buildings. With that being said, if we approve the reconsideration, we can't talk about that tonight. That's not one of the options that's there. And there's also other ramifications, other code that would be impacted by that employee, it's not code, the employee, the rules that the employees follow, et cetera. And so my concern is, I'm more inclined to vote no on the reconsideration, but ask staff to go back and look and see what the ramifications would be and what other code would have to be adjusted so that it's not contradictory to this one code that we're talking about changing. And whether that's employees carrying guns, there's other concerns that we would have with that. And so I don't know from a legal standpoint, Mike, if the best option is to not reconsider this, but then look at those other options. I look for your guidance there.
Mayor, Councilman Ray, it could be done either way. If a motion for reconsideration could pass and then the existing law could stay into effect until such future time as, if this matter was continued until staff could return and answer some of the questions that are being considered. Another option would be, would the motion for reconsideration could also be denied with instructions to staff to do suggested or requested research and return at a later date to discuss various options or have the questions answered.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
This is something I did some research on with legal counsel before the meeting. It would be also in order tonight, Councilmember Ray, to direct the ability to allow our citizens to carry. That is on the agenda. That is perfectly in order. So we could consider that tonight, but we could also move to continue. So I just wanted to address that because you were under the impression that we couldn't do that, but we could.
Town Attorney Hamblin, could you confirm if it is reconsidered? Is that a topic that can be discussed tonight, or does it need to go to a different meeting?
The, in the context of, if in fact the board voted to reconsider the matter, one of the options before the board now, well, of course, the next, excuse me, the council now, well, the next question would be, are we going to repeal the ordinance passed on August 1st? If, and that could either go, that could go either way. If the ordinance was repealed, then would have before the council the opportunity to address one of the options that were presented to the board, excuse me, the council, on August 1st, just to set forth in the proposals that were set forth then and set forth in the agenda now. And one of those is simply to repeal the ordinance. And you could also give direction to council, or excuse me, to staff, how you wish to proceed. I'm not sure if I've made myself clear, if I've answered your questions.
It sounds like there are many options.
There are many options. And it could be done, you know, it's also possible that a single motion could be made, both to repeal the existing ordinance and adopt one of the other options that were presented.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
I'll make it easy. Mike, was my statement about being able to consider the ability for citizens to carry correct? Was that a correct statement, what I said?
Yes, that is on the agenda. You can, you could consider tonight. Councilman Peter, Mayor, Councilman Peterson, I'm not suggesting that all questions have been answered, but that is a possibility and appropriately set forth on the agenda.
Thank you. Okay.
And that's, the attorney's last comment is what concerns me of, not all questions have answers yet. If we repeal this and it's determined by the council that people can bring guns into public buildings, we still have an employee rule that says employees can't bring them in. And I think that's something that needs to be discussed because that would, those two would contradict each other. And so that's my reasoning for saying, let's find out what else we need to look at. If the overall policy would be to allow guns in public buildings, I think it would be prudent to see what other codes or regulations we have would be impacted by that overall policy statement.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Do we need more discussion before we vote on that motion and second? Okay. Councilmember Cook, it's been a few minutes. Can you just, to make sure the council understands, can you state your motion again?
Again, it's simple. I motion that we reconsider the adoption of Ordinance 2439. And obviously, there'll be more discussion if this were to pass, but I think that's probably just as clear as it can be.
Good. So with that motion, second, please vote. Okay, the reconsideration is approved with a 4-3 vote. And so at this point, I open the public hearing on Agenda Item 29. And we'll look for some direction from council as to where you'd like to go. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So before we proceed with Eddie's option two, which is to do basically more research, it'll fall in line with what Councilmember Ray wants to do, which is to direct staff to come back with more information about maybe mixing and matching somewhere between Options 2 and 3, providing security in some places and maybe the right to carry in others, and maybe some combination of that. But I do agree that Option 2 is infinitely better than Option 1. I'm grateful we have the option to reconsider now. But I still prefer Option 3, including direction to allow citizens to carry, as the best option. And so however, I want to propose a compromise between Options 1 and 3 based on some things I heard in the previous meeting. And I listened to the concerns of the council, the police chief, and I've incorporated them.
Mayor, point of order. I think we have to go and talk about B first before we go to C, which is really the appeal, the repeal of the ordinance. We did the reconsideration. I think we need now to vote on the repeal. And I think once the repeal is done, then we can continue on with Councilmember Peterson's.
No, we don't have to do that yet, actually.
Well, let me, Town Attorney, guide us. You just had a disagreement, and tell us which direction to go.
Mayor, Members of the council, it can be done in either way. I think the council would find it easier if they addressed simply the matter of repeal first. And that would be repealing Ordinance 2439. And then, you know, considering whether they wish to go forward with another option tonight or direct staff to do additional study and come back on another day and repeal or address the other option. The, and the staff, the council could also vote not to repeal the ordinance so that the current law stays in effect pending future consideration if the council was inclined to address this at another time after staff input.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Since I had the floor and he interrupted, can I finish?
Yes, please.
Sorry. I think I was in order, so I'm just trying to finish what I was going to do here. And I will have a motion ready for that. So my proposal would allow sworn officers to request citizens to put their firearms in lockers. I think with the reluctance of some on the council to pursue Option 2 due to the expense, this compromise might work. If it doesn't and fails, then we'll go forward with pursuing the more expensive option, but still better option again than Option 1. And I hope it'll be, you know, if that goes forward, it'll be some kind of compromise between 2 and 3. So anyway, with that, I move to adopt Option 3, an ordinance repealing Sections 42-114 and 42-142 of the Code of Gilbert, and to direct that only sworn police officers may request a person carrying a deadly weapon entering a public establishment or attending a public event to remove the weapon pursuant to ARS Section 13-3102 dot 01 and place it in a storage locker.
Any, Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I like where that's going. To me, it feels a little premature. I'd like to hear more from Councilmember Cook, Councilmember Ray, in terms of some other options that they might have, because from some of their comments, I think that they have some other ideas that I think would be important for us to hear and consider here. So I'm not going to second it, but I do like kind of the direction. I like the spirit of compromise that we're hearing. But, and maybe we come back to it if, once we hear we're ready for, you know, some action. I think it's helpful to have a formal motion down.
Councilmember Taylor has invited Councilmember Ray and Councilmember Cook to share some more feelings, and would you like to?
Well, what I would like to do is, again, I know there's a motion on the floor, but if the motion dies, I would like the motion to repeal the ordinance. Then that allows us discussion in Option C, which is really a lot of the different, a lot of the dialogue that I think I'm looking for.
Councilmember Ray?
Mayor, he had a question. Can I answer the?
Tell us the question.
The public will care about it. They will.
My question is, what's the difference between that and what Option A is that was already approved a couple of weeks ago? What's the difference there? And the response is, well, go ahead and give your response. I won't repeat it.
Thanks. So the idea is this, I've said it from the beginning, and I think Councilmember Cook's is consistent with this. If we're not going to provide security, we should allow them to carry. I just, it's one or the other to me, and so that's why I think 2 is better than 1. But what this does is it says, I heard the concern about, you know, what if a police officer sees someone with a weapon and they have a concern, they can't, you know, they can't do anything, they have to shadow them. This addresses that, plus it combines this notion, you have an armed police officer nearby. So they're providing security. So then I don't have the problem of asking someone to give up their weapon because you've provided security nearby. That's okay. So to me, that's consistent. It addresses some of the concerns that I heard, and I think it's consistent with the guiding philosophy I'm trying to abide by.
I may agree with Councilman Peterson's motion. The problem I have is there's still other employee rules, other code that may be impacted by that. And so we're now saying that residents can bring in guns, but employees still can't. And that goes back to my initial question of, I'd like to, my, what I'd like to see happen as this gets continued, where staff can come back and say, here are all of the codes and or rules that are impacted by this overall policy. And then we can see what the unintended consequences from that could be, rather than approving something tonight and then going back and realizing we have to change other code that may have an impact on that as well.
Councilmember Peterson?
There was a second, so you could make your motion, it'd be fine. My motion's dead.
Sorry, so motion dies for lack of second. And Councilmember Cook would like to make a motion, but I hear Councilmember Ray, you're also ready to make a motion, which is really to direct staff to do some more research and clarify some of the concerns that you have, which you could probably give some more specifics.
My motion would be that we continue this item with the, with the direction to town staff to determine if the council decides to allow guns in public buildings, what other codes or employee rules would have to be amended to fall in line with that same policy of allowing guns in public buildings.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Mayor, I'll second that. And I would like to amend it to have, when we revisit, to include as an option, Councilmember Peterson's motion as a second option, and, you know, that, the analysis will help decide, you know, which direction we go. So I'd add that amendment to add Councilmember Peterson's motion.
To town leadership, do you feel that you have clarification on what's being asked?
Mayor, members of the council, maybe if you could clarify it, I understand you'd like to understand what other portions of our code or policies would be affected by this. And I want to clarify the way, what was adopted previously, it's spelled out in the statutes where, even under the new statutes, where you can carry a gun and where you can't, and what cities and towns would have to do to provide for either lockers or security. If you're talking about allowing personnel, employees of the town in Gilbert to carry guns, then that's a separate issue from what you're discussing tonight. Very clearly in our rules, employees are not allowed to have weapons on them, knives, guns. I could come back to you with a lot of reasons why I would be completely against allowing our employees to carry guns on them for, for many reasons, their own safety, safety in the workplace, in regards to even accidental discharges and performance duties. But, so if you could, I, I'm not sure, and maybe I'll defer to Michael, I'm not sure there's any other codes that are impacted by the decision you're making for the general public. If you're talking about allowing staff to carry guns, then we can certainly do that.
Which I think is what you're asking.
Yeah, I would love to see what changes would have to be made if that's determined to be the best option with staff as well. And then at that point, we'd look for feedback and advice from management and from our chief and others, and see what those consequences would be, and that would help make the decision.
Okay. Also, Mayor, if I could receive some clarification, you're also asking us to come back with some additional plans in regards to security for, maybe it's situational by building, what we would recommend for one building may not be uniformly the same as what we'd recommend for another. Are you looking for something along those lines as well?
Councilmember Ray?
I don't have any comment on that either. That wasn't part of my motion or my thought.
From a town leadership perspective, my, my sense is, as you are thinking that through, you'd probably want to do that research and let council know the feelings of, maybe for this building, it would be this, and this building might be different. So I would say yes.
Okay. As it stands right now, just so we're clear, that with what was adopted previously, we've made the decision to provide for the lockers, but there is a limited number of lockers. So right now, we've got, I believe, four or five in the lobby of this building. If we have seven people in the building at one time with a gun, those two additional people that we did not have a storage locker for technically would be allowed to carry that gun into this building right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilmember Cook?
And again, you know, my, my, my assessment of the vote really is, you know, my first direction would to not have any guns in public building. I mean, that would be my, my, my direction. If we can, in a way, use technology, or however that works, that's, you know, economically feasible, and again, I don't know what that is. To me, if we don't have any guns in the building at all, that would be really the most ideal situation for me. Then I would know that the public is protected, staff is protected because, you know, we limit. Now, as to the reality of that, I don't know, because I've never done this before, but again, for me, that's kind of been my goal. If there is some compromise as to how that matures or evolves, I'm open for those discussions.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just want to make a comment about, I'm just trying to process, I don't want to have a conversation offline here, so I'm trying to do this, but I'm hearing the concern about the employees, and it was actually something I raised, if you recall, Patrick, when we had the personnel rules before us, and I, I said, what about this later with the guns, and is there going to be a problem of correlation? But we moved that down the road, and so there it is. I'm open to that discussion too, Councilmember Ray, as far as them being allowed, but I know our town manager seems very opposed to it. And furthermore, it's not a matter of rights the way the citizens are. Citizens have a right to be in this building as a public place to voice their opinions for freedom of speech and whatnot. Employees have a contract with us, and it's a mutually voluntary transaction. They don't have a right to be here except under the terms of our contract. And so it's a different situation. I'm still open to the thought, because I think without meaningful enforcement, I'm not sure that it's great. On the other hand, I am open to the fact that you don't want to lose your job, so you're probably not going to break the rule and bring your gun to work. The only time they would break the rule is when they really had, maybe gone over the edge and were planning something terrible. And I will say that in that incident, you really haven't, we haven't dealt with that. And that's, I'm just saying, it's an honor system at that level, too. I just think the accidental, I think you will remove any accidental with that, because they're not going to bring it to work. They don't want to lose their job. So anyway, I'm open to the discussion, but I don't think it's quite the same issue we're talking about with the citizens.
Okay. There are very just feelings that were just expressed. I'm not sure where to go, other than we have a motion, and it was seconded, the amendment was not seconded, and so let's go there. Was there anyone that wanted to second the amendment?
Mayor, I'll second the amendment.
Mayor, someone remind me what the second, what the?
Yes, if we could have that clarified again, Councilmember Taylor.
Amendment went, was to bring back, in addition to Councilmember Ray's direction, Councilmember Peterson's motion.
Okay. So there's a motion, an amendment, and a second to the amendment. Please vote. Okay, that's approved with a 5-2 vote, which means, and to our town attorney, I may have missed one thing. I don't believe I closed the public hearing on 29, but is that still valid? And at this point, I'll close the public hearing on 29, and we voted. So are we done with 29 for tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We move.
Mayor, I think we just voted on the amendment, not on the original motion from Councilmember Ray.
We need one more vote on the amended motion.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, that's correct. We had the vote on the amendment to the motion, but I've been corrected, it's, we haven't had the vote on the motion yet.
Thank you for the teamwork. And so, any clarification before we vote on what we're voting on? This is Councilmember Ray's suggestion, which is a continuation. Please vote. Okay, that is a, approved with a 5-2 vote. All right. Now are we done with 29? Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, 30, 31 are done, so we move to administrative items. And maybe for the council, I see 33 as a policy item, that it might be more appropriate to do 33 than come back to 32. Is that acceptable? And is there discussion on 33, or would we entertain a motion? Councilmember Peterson?
This is the one with the, yes, cost containment. I just wanted to thank staff for their work. Thank you. I won't mention that it looks a lot like the one I brought forward. Just kidding. But anyway, thank you. I really am, I really do appreciate it. And I moved, oop, I moved to approve item 33.
Councilmember, okay. There's a motion and a second. Please vote. That's approved with a 7 of all. Thank you.
Mayor, who was the, the motion and the second, who was?
The motion was Councilmember Peterson, the second was Councilmember Taylor. Agenda item 32, Board Commission and Committee Updates. I'll turn to my left first. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, just a quick report from the Human Relations Commission. September 15th through the 10th is Hispanic Heritage Month, and look forward to more information on town celebrations, recognitions for that particular month. And I don't know if you're going to cover Constitution Week coming up as well, or if --
Please.
-- highlight a few things there. We touched on the We the People program on the 17th, but of course, that just kicks off, well, that continues in a way, a series of events. Constitution Week characters have been in the schools since the first part of August, so they've started about four or five weeks, and those are successful. That typically reaches out to about 40,000 of our students across our district and charter schools, which is exciting. September 18th and 25th is one of the biggest scout activities that happens right here in Gilbert, where a number of citizenship mayor badges are taught. Typically, there's 900 scouts that participate each night, and a number of us have participated on that, so that's going to happen again. And of course, the fair is the Saturday, I believe that's the 22nd, if I remember my date. The 21st, the Saturday. And of course, the public is invited, lots of exciting things there. ConstitutionWeekUSA.com is the website where people can get more information on all the activities. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. To my right, Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I'm, I'm very excited to finally officially announce Chamber for Good. The Gilbert Chamber of Commerce is partnering with different leaders in the community to bring together a website, and it's actually up. I'm going to give the address. It's www.chamberforgood.com/gilbert. This is a wonderful website. It does all those wonderful things we've been looking for. You can go there and press the Donate Money button. It'll link you to nonprofits that serve Gilbert citizens. You can do Donate Time, you can donate items. So it's really this great website that's going to bring together the needs and the resource, those who want to help with those in need. And we're very excited about it. We're thankful for the chamber for, for working on that, and for our city is certainly supportive of it. Two of the churches in our organization helped sponsor it. And we just want to encourage all the nonprofits to go register. Now's the time to register. And the citizens also to register, to be on the mailing list, so that they can be updated on the needs as they arise. And so, very exciting, just wanted to announce that, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda item 34, a reminder to the town council, the next Wednesday night at 7:00, we will have a joint meeting with the Gilbert Unified School District. Agenda item 35, report from town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of announcements tonight from our Gilbert digital team. They won a couple of awards over the last couple of weeks at the 3CMA. This is a national organization. We were the only, I'm sorry, in the other award, they are a national organization. We won a Silver Award under the TV and Video Special Programming category for our digital State of the Town. And from the PRSA, that's the Public Relations Society of America, another national organization, we won a Copper Anvil Merit Award for Integrated Communication for our digital State of the Town. And we were the only municipality entry nominated in any category. So we were the only city or town represented in any category, and we won a Copper Anvil for that. And at the same organization, PRSA, our Spark Mobile App League won an honorable mention for National Digital Government Achievement Awards. So great work to Dana and her entire team. We're very proud of the work they produce for us.
Thank you for sharing that. Any thing with Public Works that, or is that a future announcement?
Probably a future announcement. We do have a new Public Works Director. He will be starting September 23rd, so we'll look forward to introducing him at our October 3rd meeting.
No appetizers then? We'll just wait? We'll be patient? Aggressive patience?
He has got tremendous credentials coming to us from the city of Phoenix, and he's, he'll be a great addition to our team.
Thank you. Agenda item 36, report from council members on current events. Agenda item 37, I believe I covered my four items, and I'll just add for a little icing on top that there are four specific events that are happening this month, and it's primarily town manager and mayor, but some of you are involved in some other ones' relationships with our partner to the south, Mexico, of events that are happening, and very positive. And as appropriate, we'll give you some more details. And next month, we have a couple of events with Canada. So more to come, and relationship building continues. Next on this discussion is meeting adjourned. Thank you.